I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Davis, will you open in prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this, another day of life. We thank you, God, for your blessings. We just pray, continue to pray, for our friends, neighbors, pray for those that are dealing with this heat right now. Lord, I just pray, God, that you would comfort them, help them. Lord, that, Father, we just pray for cooler, a little cooler weather would be great. We just pray that, Lord, that you would be with us today, give us wisdom and knowledge. And we just, we ask you, Lord, to help us as we make decisions for this county. We do thank you again for the blessings, the little things that we fail to count in life, that we do, we praise you for today. We ask it all in the precious name of Jesus and everybody said.
Amen. Thanks, sir. And we're off to the right, July 24th. Month disappeared pretty quick. But with that, we'll approve the meeting minutes of the 17th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the 17th.
I'll vacate the chair and second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation of funds.
Any comments or questions on our appropriation fund request? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation transfer of funds.
Comments or questions on three? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts, various funds, all obligations, and then annulled certificates, in the total amount of $988,968.07.
Any comments or questions on the docket? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
Any comments or questions on our miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the High Department of Taxation regarding permissive sales tax.
All right, this is our May 2025 sales local, $933,626.38, sales actual $460,806.18, total $1,394,432.56. This amount is $161,411.86 more than that of the May 2024. So thankfully, we're, we are seeing a trend where we're bringing in more revenue. Once again, I still remain cautiously optimistic. There's a lot of stuff happening at the State House regarding inside millage and property tax. So even though we're seeing our sales tax increase, I think this is probably the third or fourth month that we've seen an increase. There still could be quite a bit of change coming to the county budget should the inside millage language take hold there at the State House. That could impact us to the tune of, was it $2.8 million roughly, if that change goes through?
$2.3.
Was it 2.3 for us? So I did quote that wrong, 2.3, but still, 10% of the budget. So anyway, that's where we're at today. Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I was thinking about this the other day and gotten the initial sales tax figures earlier and, of course, this has played out really well. One of the things I'm concerned about, and it's not inflationary pressures from the Fed, it's more inflationary pressures on, on consumer goods. Where prices have gone up, the prices haven't gone down. And, you know, of course, we're, we're seeing an increased sales tax load from an increased cost of goods. Just, it's, it's a matter of numbers. So I don't know how much of that plays into this number. I like to think that our economy is, is good. We actually, I was looking the other day, we have, one of the things, and I've voiced this before, is a lot of people look at the unemployment numbers. There's also a way to look up employment numbers, how many people are actually working. We're actually, we're, we're at some of the highest levels we've been for many, many, many years. And that, we've kind of plateaued. We're above 28,000 working people in the county. That makes you wonder, we have 75,000 people in the county. I know we have, we have a lot of people that are retired, we have a high senior population. But that, believe it or not, that is a high number. And if we've actually gotten above 29,000, it teeters, it just teeters right there. So, you know, what we want to see is, we want to see median income rising, we've seen that. But also so of salaries, so, so is income. So, so we're seeing that happening. But we need to see everything rising at the same time. Our unemployment is being, is lacking. It is, it is, it's, it's hit a stagnant place. Matter of fact, it's gone up, and so has the entire state of Ohio. We're seeing that everywhere. So those are the indicators we look at, along with permissive sales tax, and I share your concern. We don't know what's going to happen. It is, it is a wild, wild west right now in Columbus trying to figure that out. That's the best way to look at it. And I know that there was an override of the governor's veto on the one item this past week. We'll see where all that lies with the Senate and see what they do. But more needs to be done. There just needs to be more done, period. So, so we'll, we'll see on that front. It is a concern. And the schools and everyone who gets that millage is very, they are very, very, very concerned. And there's a lot of pressures. There are, there's a lot of pressures right now. So it's going to be interesting to see how it all plays out. But in a capital market system, it does play out. It will play out one way or another. So let's see what happens. But that's, that's my thoughts on the matter. I was chewing on it while I was sitting at a dead end road this morning trying to get out of Souda Ville. And it was a mess. It's, it's just a mess. So anyways, they're doing their best up there. But anyways, that's, that's my thoughts and, and motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of access Souda County title ADA and reasonable modification policy reviews for 2025.
Any comments or questions on item seven? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award and contract agreement for the SCI CR 503-0.00 Ohio River Road Phase Two Safety Project regarding the engineer.
So this is the Ohio River Road Phase Two Safety Project. If you remember, the previous safety project was on the east end of the Ohio River Road. So this is the west end, I believe. The project's awarded to the Shelley Company in the amount of $643,985.91. Project is being subsidized by a $500,000 grant through OVRDC's Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. So quite a bit of the program is being covered by grant funding. Our engineers' office continues to do a fantastic job of going after grant funding and winning and bringing that money into our community. So we appreciate their hard work. Any additional comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution to establish a fund for the SCI CR 503-0.00 Ohio River Road Phase Two Safety Project, PID 123460, regarding the engineer.
Well, with the grant money, we have to have a place for it to go on a line item. So that's what this does. It creates a line item specifically for this project for the $500,000 grant to go into. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Any comments or questions on the amended certificate? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of authorizing the clerk to advertise notice to bidders for bulk liquefied petroleum, gas, fuel supply, and delivery services regarding ASC.
So ASC always puts out to bid their bulk liquefied petroleum, gas, supply and delivery services. That's what this will be, authorizing our clerk to put that out for bid. Any comments or questions?
Just that I, I would like to stress the fact that a lot of people don't know or realize that we have a green energy fleet. Our entire ASC fleet is ran on propane. So I'm not sure if that's the case all across the state of Ohio, but, but our local transportation unit is suck.
Looks like 451 gallons weekly, approximately 13,000 gallons annually.
They crisscross the entire county. I see them all the time picking up people. And that helps a lot of low, middle income people. It helps veterans. It helps those needing to go get prescriptions and groceries. And they'll run you to Walmart, drop you off, and pick you up later. And they, they really do an invaluable service and all the employees do a great job. Really do.
With that, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing load limits on various county and township bridges regarding the engineer.
Any comments or questions on the load limits for the township bridges? Hearing none.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers.
Any comments or questions on our fund transfers? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. That's the end of our agenda. At this point, we'll open to questions, items on agenda. Any items on agenda?
No.
Mr. Scott Lee?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This company here has some questions, as always.
Of course.
So you were, you were talking about the sales tax, the millage proposal. Do we know much about where Senator Johnson, have you reached out to his office, been working with them at all?
On the, the property tax, inside millage? So right now, a lot of that discussion lives in the House. That's where most of the energy is being spent. I know Rep. Thomas is kind of traveling the state, trying to drum up support for, for the inside millage. It still has a long way to go, I think, before it even gets over to the Senate. I don't think there's anything in the Senate, and I could be wrong, connected to property tax or inside millage. A lot of this discussion is, is in the House right now.
There's three, why not have vetoes?
So they only, they only passed one. But the other ones, I don't know that they had enough support to, to put them on the floor.
I believe they made the table then.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that went to the Senate, they'll have so many days to consider. I think they're recessed right now. So I'm not exactly sure what's going on with that. I have, to answer your question, I want to talk to Senator Johnson, but.
I know that some local school districts have raised some concerns.
Oh, yeah.
Regarding the 40%. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all about fiscal, you know, responsibility. The ones that feel that they're fiscally responsible and they're building the nest egg, just like you and I would if we were going to build under a house or whatever, they don't feel like that should be under the purview. I know the County Commissioner Association has, has supported that, to allow it, but also to have the Budget Commission.
To, to allow the property tax relief?
Yeah, well, to, to have the, for them to have the 40% cap, but not where they take away the money automatically, but that the county budget commission looks at what they have and determine whether or not it's fair. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things there that I don't really know why it's a issue personally. I don't know how you feel about it.
I, I was just saying, I think the Budget Commission language is one of the items that did get vetoed and did go through the House. It was one of the ones that passed the vote.
Yeah, so it, it's a quagmire there, quote that word. It is a quagmire. It is, nobody can really, it seems like they can't get consensus, but the clock's ticking.
Yep.
The clock's ticking. The, the citizens are going to take care of this if the GA doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, there's, and what, there's initiative to completely eliminate property taxes that could be on the ballot in November. So, which I think is what, in my opinion, is that's what's putting pressure on the legislator to do something versus the full removal of property tax and what that could do to, to local government. So I think they're trying to do something to kind of offset what could be coming in November.
You mentioned that 10% potential impact to the county budget from this.
Yeah, they, there was, I think it was 800 and some million across the state, total throughout all the counties. Our, our association put some numbers together that if, if the inside, if the, yeah, if the inside millage would go away, the total impact.
That was confirmed with auditor room.
Yeah.
So that was, that was reviewed and confirmed?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a big hit. It would be a big hit. We need a, whatever they do, and nobody, I don't, I don't think anybody's saying, don't touch it, don't do anything, because it's not right. I, I think the homestead exemption definitely needs done. I, I, I hear this all the time, seniors need that relief. It's just, it's getting to the point to where you, you have seniors being priced out of their homes. And it is happening here in Souda County. I've, I've heard it. And people are trying to determine, decide, am I going to buy groceries? Am I going to buy medicine? Or am I going to pay my property taxes? And they need that relief. As a matter of fact, I saw a statistic this morning that the, to relieve, to increase the homestead exemption to 100% after 65, that it would affect the general fund of the state of Ohio by 3%. It's a 3% equation. So I, I, I just, I don't know what that number is. I haven't dug that far into it. It's a 3% equation. So I, I, I just, I don't know what that number is. I haven't dug that far into it, but I, I read that this morning. I was like, wait a minute, we're squabbling over 3%? But you have to find a replacement for that revenue too. So that's, that's where it's at. That's where the, the big, you know, ask and lift is in Columbus. I don't know. We'll see. There's competent people doing this, and they just, not everybody agrees. And when you've got 90 and some people with different ideas and different constituencies, and Ohio, you have 88 counties, and I can tell you one thing, every one of them is different. And it, it just, it takes a lot of work to get to where we need to be on this issue. So the best advice I have is watch and wait and see, and see what happens soon, I hope.
All right, well, that's all the questions I have, gentlemen. Thank you.
Questions off agenda?
Yes.
All right. Well, Scotty, you're already in.
No.
Oh, you're, okay.
I'm in for.
Look at you. Thank you.
Seth Mackley from Sautaukee Daily News, two questions. Any advice for the candidates interviewing with Republican Central Committee for the vacant seat? And it's been a year since Governor DeWine announced the multimillion dollar grant to upgrade the waterfront in Portsmouth. While these projects aren't under the commissioner's control, have you heard anything about the progress of the plans or a timeline?
So advice, I, gosh, I sit in a unique position where I went through this process, and now I get to sit on the other side of it. My only advice is focus on yourself, focus on your vision, focus on your experience, and lead with what you want to do with the county versus what other, what you perceive others are or aren't doing. Like, what is your vision? And lead with that. And then it's, we, we got a very competent Republican Central Committee that's going to have to wade through this and make some tough decisions and anxiously waiting to see what that is. But that is my advice. You know, there, there was a, there was a rep, Doug Green, remember Doug? Doug passed away COVID. He was out, and he was a representative over in Brown County, but he came to our county several times. And he shared with me a story that his dad told him. And his dad told him when he first got into politics, if I hear you talking about your opponent, I will vote for your opponent. Run on your own merit, run on your own ideas, and not on the negative opinion that you're trying to paint of others. So that's stuck with me, and I appreciate those wise words. And I, you know, that's how elections should be. This one, you know, this person is also going to be thrusted immediately into a campaign, because guess what? They got to run next year. So there's a, there's a lot to consider, and that's, that's on top of the work that we do here and making sure you have the appropriate skill set to, to execute on, on what we have to do as commissioners. So best of luck to all of them. Several have reached out. They've all gotten the same advice. It's run on your own merits, run on your own ideas, and the chips will fall where they fall. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that one at all?
Sound good.
Perfect. The other piece, the waterfront project. So the waterfront project is being managed by Lawrence County Community Action. They were the lead grant recipient for our region. A lot of what we're waiting on at this point is truly the Army Corps of Engineer permitting. And they are wanting to do the permit in totality for all the projects at one time, is my understanding. There has been some preliminary stuff that's happened. For instance, we, we saw some concern that there was some trees cut down at Alexandria Point. It had to happen before the bats came back into town. There's some, there's some regulatory things with migrating bats. It's, from my understanding, it's definitely moving forward. It's just, it's in the permitting phase. I think they have a contractor, a main contractor for it lined up. And, but it's ultimately the city and Lawrence County Community Action taking the lead on that, and we'll support where we can. Sounds good. We got two sounds good. We'll take it. Anything else? Mr. Lee, anything off agenda? Any comments, Commissioner Davis?
I did want to add, the 335 bridge north of Mule Town is open. Congratulations, O'Donnell, on a project well done. Though there was a lot of angst in the community on all points north of there, trying to get north and south. But the, the bridge is open. That's the good news. And for anyone wondering on the bypass roads that were affected, that were used so heavily. One, one road is wide enough for a car. And it was often pat, if anybody drove that, and I know a lot of people watching would know what I'm talking about. It was tight, and a lot of cars went off the berm. And I know there's some places along the road where it's that deep, rutted. And they are working on contracting, getting that fixed. So that'll be repaired, put back in its original shape. They're waiting on O'Donnell to, to get all that done and get those roads back in the good country rural shape. And they're, they're actually very nicely paved roads. But this project has done some, does some work on them, and they're going to have to fix the berm. So anyways, I just wanted to let everybody know that, just in case people were complaining, upset about the condition of the roads after. They are addressing that. And that was part of the original project outlier, that they had to do that. So that's done. And other than that, that's all I have. Enjoy your weekend.
Perfect. Thank you for that. I wanted to update. I spent the day, Tuesday, in Columbus with Rep. Pizzuli and prosecutor team. And Pizzuli has, Rep. Pizzuli has offered House Bill 58. This is a bill we've talked about at length at this table. This is the Certificate of Need and Regulation of Recovery Housing in the state of Ohio. To, to be this intimately involved with the bill process has been pretty enlightening. A lot of times, we believe we just go up and provide proponent testimony, and then somebody provides opponent testimony. We are now in interested party meetings where some of the opponents and some of the proponents are brought into the room. And Tuesday, we were literally going line item by line item. Do you agree with this? Do you agree with that? Where's the, so there was a lot of positive movement still on, on that bill and some, some collaboration, even with folks that may be against it in theory, but coming together and figuring out a way to, quite honestly, strengthen the recovery community, making sure that there are appropriate standards of care, making sure that there are, you know, houses that are registered with the appropriate authorities, and then providing the mechanisms for those that do not comply to be shut down. You know, we heard multiple stories, even on Tuesday, of even still within this community, operators that are not on any register, that have not gone through the process, that are still living with substandard care. And unfortunately, the current process requires that complaints are made, they're investigated, but then they're just forwarded over to the AG's office. So the problem with that is, one, the AG is swamped with, I don't know, stuff like human trafficking and, and different major issues that they, they tackle. But what the current legislation doesn't look at is substandard level of care. Because just because you provide a substandard level of care, doesn't mean you're breaking the law if the law doesn't exist. So trying to get some local control with our Adams boards, being able to go and investigate possible authority with the prosecutor's office to be able to, you know, put injunctions on places to shut them down. You can see that with, I mean, we're able to do it with restaurants and hotels and different things that are providing substandard service. And yet, in the recovery housing world, there's not currently a mechanism to do that very rapidly. So I just wanted to share that update. You know, I've even gotten messages even this week. Hey, I think there's a recovery house being put in down the road. Is there anything I can do? And the reality is, no, there's not. You know, there's, there's some current legislation that just requires them to be certified and on a list, but there's still people not complying with that. And then the question is, even if they are certified, what happens when they do fall below that standard of care? So a lot of work's still happening there. I, I think it's still on track. The bill's still in committee. It has a real possibility of potentially getting out of committee probably this fall, hopefully. And then the legislator can take a vote on it and provide some relief. And not just for the communities, but also the people that unwittingly might go into one of these service providers thinking like, hey, this is a great opportunity, and then realize that it's, it's not what they were sold on. So more to come on that. Appreciate Rep. Pizzuli's continued work on this. He, he's been fighting this one for a bit. So I just appreciate his hard work. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Everybody have a great weekend.